of Supervisors meeting, our last meeting before our summer hiatus. And Roberta, would you please call the roll?
Supervisor Bennett.
Here.
Supervisor Zaragoza.
Here.
Supervisor Long.
Here.
Supervisor Foy.
Here.
And Supervisor Parks.
Here, thank you. And this morning, we have for our moment of inspiration Peggy Walker, Ventura County Teacher of the Year. Peggy is truly an inspirational teacher with 28 years teaching experience, 20 in Newberry Park High School in the Caneo Valley Unified School District. She teaches AP Psychology, AP European History, Research Methods, coaches the school's mock trial team, and is the school's resident technology guru, helping teachers build their own website. In 1999, she traveled to Japan through the Toyota International Teacher Program, and in 2004, she represented the U.S. and the Ukraine as a Teachers of Excellence Award recipient, which gave her the opportunity to work with teachers and students in the Ukraine. Also, as an American Memories Fellow for the Library of Congress in Washington, D.C., she participated in hands-on workshops and wrote digital lesson plans for the web-based learning page, the Library of Congress's teacher source. Peggy Walker was named Ventura County's Teacher of the Year by Stan Mantooth, Ventura County Superintendent of Schools, and CBUSD Superintendent Jeff Barstad in May, and will now be considered for the California Teacher of the Year to be named in November. Congratulations, we're so glad you can be here, and you are already an inspiration to many. So if you'd like to come up to the microphone, maybe give us some words of wisdom.
Thank you so much. It's such a pleasure to be here. Superintendent Parks, Supervisor Parks, and Board of Supervisors, it's a pleasure. I think we're all similar, some are younger, some about my age. I want you to think back to your school days, and your school days were probably fairly similar to mine. Think about your homework. Where did you find your answers? I remember 5th grade, looking for the answer in the book, and I couldn't find it, so I turned in the assignment, said the answer's on page 51. The kids' answers are in the textbook, and those are the places you go, and if you can't find it, where else do you go? Think about what research was like. Libraries had hours, research, reference materials, or in a library, if the library was closed, you had to wait. I'm a terrible typist. I'm an okay word processor, but typewriters were unforgiving. So your memories might be similar to mine. Well, schools have changed a lot. So today, I want to talk a little bit about Ventura County, and how schools have changed with everyone, how our students have changed. They're not the same students that we were by any means. A lot of ways, I think they're much more sophisticated. Now, I want you to think back to when you learned to ride a bicycle. You probably began by learning, mastering a tricycle. Tricycles don't have any brakes, and somebody might have had a big wheel. Then you moved up to a small bike with training wheels, and you felt pretty wobbly, but got comfortable with that. You learned balance, you learned how to figure, how to balance, and how to slow down, and stop, which was hard with a tricycle. Then you began mastering balance and timing. You had a mentor, maybe a dad, a brother, a mom, that would help you. And finally, the day came when they raised your training wheels, and you wobbled a little bit, hit those training wheels, but you stayed upright. Finally, the day came when the training wheels were off. Your mentor held the back of the bike and pushed you, and you were on your own. A little bit awkward to be on two wheels for the first time, but you gained momentum and balance, and realized that you're riding a bike by yourself. Now, some of you might have been like me, and had that realization with some trepidation. Do you remember wobbling handlebars as you slowed down too much, and losing your balance, and falling off your bike? So did you let the scraped knees and fall stop you each time you got back on? And soon, you were the master of the bike world with a sense of power, because now you could go where you wanted, and had a sense of freedom and real independence. You may have moved on to bigger bikes. For me, I had to master the mail bike with the bars, because I had older brothers. Cruisers, 10 speeds, and you transferred those same skills to maybe riding a, I had a skateboard. This was before, you know, it was a little wobbly skateboard. Or maybe even a motorcycle, or a dirt bike. Now, when we learn to ride a bicycle, we internalize the skills, and we adapt to whatever bicycles we ride. This is really the key to education today. Students need to internalize, they need to learn to balance, and adapt as the world changes. So beyond this sense of freedom and mobility, what's important about riding a bicycle is that we apply the knowledge. And the two key words here are transfer, transferring those skills, and balance. So the cyclist exercises and strengthens her muscles, and learns to apply past experiences to new experiences. Our world today is changing at a pace that we have never seen before. It's an information explosion, and the facts are changing so quickly that what we build our facts on become obsolete, and we can't even imagine the future for our children. Now, when I was in school, I had a pretty good idea of what the future is going to be, but our children have such a, it were changing at such a pace that it's not so easy. Let's look at our Ventura County children. I'll give you a couple of examples. My grandson turns two at the end of the month. He takes his mom's iPad, and he can navigate through it, and pick the application he wants, to watch the program he wants. And if he gets tired of it, he knows how to change to another program. And he's been doing this for a couple of months. Logan is seven and a half. He's the son of one of my assistant principals. Last week, he told his dad he needed an SD card so he could download their iTunes music to the SD card and put it on his Nintendo DS. Using his Nintendo system, he's drawing original pictures, importing images, and making his own music videos. Now, you might not have followed me, all this SD, DS, but this is seven-year-old, seven-and-a-half-year-old totally gets it, knows what he's doing. In fact, he has even borrowed his dad's cellphone and gotten apps using his credit card, because they need it for the family. So, yeah, this is kind of what we're looking at in our future. Now, when we use a pen, we don't marvel at it, but it's pretty amazing that a pen will work. That's how our children are with technology. They don't question it, but they know how to use it. Now, finally, how are our teachers keeping pace? A challenge for teachers today, we want to expect excellence, but we need to keep pace with our kids. We need to be able to at least apply the technology that they're comfortable with. And this is a challenge, and a great challenge for teachers. It's one of the things that I really love to keep up with. I really want to compliment Kathy Reschencheck. She is the Educational Technology Specialist for Ventura County, and she's very forward-looking. She leads us. She encouraged the use of Promethean boards, and I think it's wonderful that Moore Park District has purchased Promethean boards. Promethean boards are active, and the children can interact with them, and you can do whole lesson plans visually. She's also made it so that Ventura County hosts Moodle. Now, Moodle is a web-based, password-protected environment. It's in the cloud. I use it for all of my classes. Students sign in, parents can sign in. That's where you get your agenda, your homework, but it's much more than that. You can have wikis and blogs. I was the first to transfer mine at the first of the year, at the school year last year, and now there are 66 courses with the Ventura County Moodle hosting space. Some are special education, some are for teachers, 22 of them specifically are for teachers. Nine are elementary classes in Moore Park. One of the teachers in Moore Park teaches 2nd grade, and her class is a hybrid class. Now, I teach high school, so I've done hybrid classes, which are part Internet, part online, and part face-to-face. Her 2nd grade class is a hybrid class, and her kids spend half of the day on the computer, and half of the day face-to-face with the teacher. They have a Moodle setup so the kids can access things from home, and her kids are always asking her to make sure that she has, that they have access and have things available. So I'm excited that we have teachers who are integrating technology and using it. I had a former student come and visit me. She wanted to, she's getting her teaching certificate, and she wanted to observe, and she was shocked. She was, came into the classroom, and it was nothing like it had been when she sat in my classroom several years ago. My students were working on projects. We were studying the Middle East, and instead of me talking about it, they were all in pairs, representing different countries in the Middle East. They were doing a threaded discussion, so I would post a question through Moodle, and they would all respond, and respond to each other's responses. And their final project was to build a fake Facebook, where they had their profile, what their issues were, and they interacted with friends from the Middle East. My job was just, once I got them going, was just sitting back, and watching, and making sure, and suggesting references. This is exciting to me. You can see that the face of education has changed a lot. I think we're on a hinge in history, and that was one of the points of my writing for my Teacher of the Year, and I'm excited about this hinge. I'm excited to have two parts that connect, the old and the new. And I have a lot of faith in the future, that our students, by finding this balance, by being able to adapt and transfer these skills, will certainly be the leaders of tomorrow. I thank you.
Thank you very much, and congratulations to you. I think the students are very fortunate to have you and other teachers out there that are really looking to the future, and helping them get the skills that they need and the education that they deserve. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Supervisor Zaragoza, would you like to lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
(inaudible) of the United States of America, and through the republic which stands one nation, one God, individual, with the kingdom of justice for all.
It is really interesting to hear how different school is these days, and wondering where it's going to go in the future. Thank you. Our next item on the agenda, then, is our minutes of the meeting of July.
Madam Chair, I'd like to have the minutes continue to September 13.
And that, Chair, I just want to make a comment to our outstanding teacher. I taught for 20 years at my school before I got this job, and I think in 10 years, I think it's going to change dramatically. So I just really appreciate the update that this must go on after. I'm sure it's going to change at a even faster pace over the next 10 years.
I think so.
Thank you, Peggy.
It does. It is changing at a faster pace. We have a motion to approve the minutes by Supervisor Zaragoza.
To continue to September, continue.
I'm sorry. Yes, continue them. And a second from Supervisor Long, if we could please vote.
(inaudible).
And that passes unanimously. Our next item on the agenda is our agenda review.
Thank you, Chair Parks. Couple of changes. Request that Consent Agenda Item 19 be heard as a regular agenda item, due to a revised board letter.
And, Madam Chair, as part of that request, as we asked you to also build a specific, I'd like to do that item before we do the other consent.
Okay.
On Consent Agenda Item Number 11, Department of Airports, they have added plans and specifications, and those have been provided to your board and uploaded to the website yesterday afternoon. Request that your board remove Agenda Item 37, for that to be heard at a later date.
What was that?
37.
That's the.
That's the VCTC, VCOG. And then on Items 16 and 19, change the agenda title with respect to the districts, changing it from the third to the second.
In recognition of our redistricting.
There you go.
(inaudible).
And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Do any other supervisors have any requests regarding our, changing of our agenda? Okay. Then with that, do we have a motion to accept the agenda revised?
Motion.
We have a motion from Supervisor Long, a second from Supervisor Bennett, if we could all please vote.
(inaudible).
So in addition to those, we'll also, just for purposes of information, ask for the, is it the Item 14, we might have some staff presentation on that also. This is regards the Mass Fatality Catastrophe Plan. So, but first, we do have a request that we hear Item 19. Is that correct? Let me do that prior to approval of our consent. Mr. Philigard.
Good morning, Chair Parks, members of the board. Mr. Powers, this is an expansion of an existing lease agreement with Casa Pacifica. At the Lewis Road property, it'll add additional two acres to the lease area. There are three dilapidated houses on the property that will be rehabilitated for emancipated foster youth. Do any questions? Can answer those.
Madam Chair, just like to call it, on the board agenda, there's a reference to youth connections, and I think it's really Casa Pacifica. So if there's written board letter, or written agenda, it was confusing at first for people to see that. So I just wanted to call it out from that standpoint, but I really appreciate that, seeing Steve Nelson here, because I think the other thing we wanted to point out is just the great work that Casa Pacifica has been doing. In addition to the great work that they've been doing, this really expands their ability to service and cooperation that we've really been talking a lot about, which is emancipated youth, and try to have abilities to help these emancipated youth in those conditions. I hope Steve will take back our appreciation, and that's part of why we really worked to make this a lease for the muscles to approach us with this request, and our staff to deal with it in detail. So good luck. This is a good day, and a good day for emancipated youth.
And Supervisor Long, you had a comment?
Yeah, just to also think this is excellent use of this property. We've had, for years, I think, lots of discussions around this and the other sites, to, related to the rain site. And this is a natural use extension for Casa, to be able to use this. Plus, it stays with the original intent of the transfer from the state, to continue to use this for our social service goals, and our goal certainly to protect and support our emancipated foster youth. So I think it's a good, good use of the property.
And Chair, if I could, Roberta just tells me everything I said wasn't, wasn't heard. So I assume people out in the audience were able to hear that, all right? I saw Steve shake his head, so I won't repeat that, except to get on the record, this is a very, we really appreciate Casa Pacifica stepping forward to try to come up with more options for our youth. Thank you.
And emancipated foster youth being those who turn 18, and then all of a sudden don't have the financing, the support system, being able to have a place to live is so vital. Once you have a place to live, you have the opportunity to actually go on interviews and try to, or be able to, be able to attend college. But so many foster youth do end up homeless. So not just as a transition from Casa Pacifica, but county-wide, how necessary this is. So really appreciate it coming together. Any other comments, Mr. Powers?
Just real quick, just thank Dr. Nelson for his leadership on this, and also Keith and Kristi Madden and Sally Harrison from the CEO's office for, for getting it done. Thank you.
And Supervisor Long said, this has been a vision that's been there for quite some time, so nice to see it moving forward. We have a motion by Supervisor Bennett, and a second from Supervisor Long, if we could all please vote. Okay, that item passes, and that was 19. And then with that, we can go to the staff, if we can have a small presentation regarding the Mass Catastrophe, Mass Fatality Plan.
Madam Chair, thank you for calling this and bringing this forward. It's been two years in the making, and it is a very complex, detailed, and important plan. And I think with the work that's been done, just to capture some of the highlights of it for the public to understand, I was just asked this question last week in a speech I was giving. The, one of the audience members said, are we prepared for disasters? And I immediately said, of course we are, and we're always looking to improve, and not knowing that this was going to be on the agenda. So thank you for bringing it forward.
Sure, and this is Item 14.
Good morning, Madam Chair, board members, Mr. Powers. It has been about two years in the making. We had a grant requirement to prepare for mass fatality events, and, you know, I got, handed the task. I'm a research psychologist. I went out and I did a lot of research. I've reviewed at least 40 or 50 plans that are, you know, state, international, you know, local. And one of the conclusions I came to after reading all of those plans is that there's a big distinction between a multi-fatality event and a mass fatality event. And almost none of the plans that are out there, you know, around the country are what I'll call a true mass fatality-level, you know, planning model. You know, the distinction being that, you know, you know, these are things we don't want to talk about, but you have to. You know, an airplane goes down, you know, even 9/11 was a multi-fatality event. The difference being that, you know, even around something as horrific as that was, the, around that event was infrastructure still in place, that could be called upon in, you know, relatively short order to respond. Mass fatality events, on the other hand, are the kinds of things that we saw in 1918 with the, you know, the pandemic flu outbreak, you know, that killed, you know, literally millions of people around the world, you know, hundreds of thousands in this nation. And in that kind of a scenario, you don't have mutual aid really available to you. You know, there aren't outside resources that you can call on and bring them in and try to, you know, help out a local situation. So what I came to is, you know, let's, pardon me, go all the way sort of into unthinkable territory, and try to plan for something that, you know, I consider to be a legacy plan. You know, I'm assuming, you know, and oh, by the way, after I'm done with this, I've asked my boss if I could have some therapy to deal with, you know, severe depression issues. But let's, you know, let's work out, let's go to the deep end of the pool, you know, plan for kind of an unthinkable event, and then, you know, back it up. And if we can do that, then we can plan for the multi-fatality events, too. So, you know, this plan goes into that deep end, really assumes that we're on our own, you know, we have an epidemiologist who, you know, you know, did some, you know, work on numbers for us, and, you know, we could have, you know, tens of thousands of people dead in a repeat of 1918. And, you know, that kind of an event could happen. And, you know, what would we do locally if, you know, if things got that bad? So I've tried to plan for that. My assumption is that if we have plans in place, if we have the thinking in place ahead of time, that we might actually be more prepared to do something if such an event comes about. So that's essentially what I've done here. I'm sorry to say I found a couple of typos. I want to fix them. But, you know, any questions? Comments?
Yes, certainly. It is depressing to think what happens if you have a lot of people who are, who have died or have been killed. And, but still, we have seen, you know, within the last few years, that we can't count on the federal government or the state government to be the ones that are going to be first on the scene, and being able to control, and having this plan, I think, will certainly give us confidence that we'll be able to, be able to move forward and get out there immediately, and do what we need to do. So I'm glad that we do have it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. That is all the items on our consent calendar, our consent agenda. So we could have a motion to approve all items, except for the, we had, I guess, none of, none of the consent items were pulled. So we have a motion from Supervisor Long, and a second from Supervisor Foy, if we could all please vote. Thank you. And that passes unanimously. So with that, we can go back to our next item on the agenda, which is our public comment period. Do we have any public comment cards?
Yeah, we do.
Okay. So instead of public comment, we're going to go to our board comments, and I'll start with Supervisor Foy.
Well, thank you. I asked people to adjourn in memory of people on this list, and just the opportunity to talk about small, local heroes. We talked about people over in Simi Valley, that two people walked in on the street, noticed a fire at somebody's home. One person ran to call 911, another one grabbed a garden hose, and was able to start working on the fire and stuff, saving some people and some animals in a home. Just the idea that people are still out there in the care, and are still willing to jump in and do some of the things that we all hope we would do, too. So, anyway, I hope that everybody enjoys the rest of their summer. So, no comments. Thank you.
Thank you. And Supervisor Long?
Yes, thank you. I, too, have a list somewhere here. I'll find it. There it is. To adjourn in memory of folks from the 3rd district, and I'll just submit the list. I would also like to just mention, I had the opportunity to, to ride in the Ventura County Fair on Saturday on behalf of the American Cancer Society, in a pink Bel Air Chevy, 1956. And it was fun. Bright pink, it was a stock car, so it had this big Hemi thing on it, and made all this noise, and it was fun. But the fair is well underway, and I think all of us received a note from our ag commissioner, Commissioner Henry Gonzalez, that the fair's display took first- Commissioner Henry Gonzalez, that the fair's display took first place in the agricultural support category, and the Ventura County Weed Management Area Group took second place in the resource management category. Both displays were created by our ag biologists, Corinne Bell and Jamie Mastri. So, kudos for the ag commissioner's office and his team in placing in the fair. I think that's probably it, other than one last reminder, this Saturday, August 13th, making strides towards a world with more birthdays. We've got a pinket in the Striders Group walking, and it'll be fun at the Ventura Harbor, and it's always a great way to, one, raise some funds and have fun also. So, I'm a walker, in case anyone wants to give support.
That's great. And if it turns out to be a very hot day, we know it'll still be cool there.
That's right.
Supervisor, is there a good second?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I also like to adjourn in memory of these individuals on this list. I have about four or five items that I'd like to speak about real quickly. On Saturday, I had the opportunity to attend the Night in Wauhaka in Oxnard, the MYCOP 10-year anniversary, and our esteemed CEO was there, and Dr. Bob, and Melanie Roy, and Lorenz, and quite a few of the county officials. It was such a great event. My understanding was there was 300-plus people there, and they had to turn people away, you know, because it was so full. But it was great, you know, just to honor Sandra Young for her outstanding work that she's done, you know, for MYCOP, the Wauhaka community. So, it was just a great event. And I didn't realize how great Dr. Bob can speak Spanish. Boy, he was really going at it, you know, and making an excellent presentation. And also, I had the opportunity to be a judge at the fair, and Supervisor Long, you look great in that pink car.
Did I run?
I put you up there, but, and I also, Supervisor Bennett was there with Boys and Girls Club. There was 85 entries, and it was just excellent entries, and it was just great to see the families and the kids enjoying, you know, the parade and getting ready to run over to the parade after the, to the fair after the parade. So, it was a great opportunity to be a judge there for the county fair parade. And last night, I had the opportunity to attend the, this is sponsored by Oxnard High School Union School District and also the university, the 2011 Summer College Award Program. This is for the migrant individuals, migrant family. 30 students got diplomas yesterday, and I was honored to represent the Board of Supervisors to hand out certificates, you know, to them. And I want to thank Dr. Rush and Selena, and all the Oxnard High officials that were there yesterday, and some of the other elected officials, and this great program. There was one young man that spoke, he did just an excellent job. He spoke about the opportunity he got through this program. He said when he was in the 6th grade, you know, his teacher told him, "You're not going to make it, you've got to go pick some lemons, go pick strawberries, what are you doing here?" So, when he went over to this program, he ended up now, he got invited to the, let me see if I got it correctly, the migrant student agency in Washington DC to speak before that committee, and was given additional dollars, you know, to attend college. Now, he's got a bachelor's and a master's degree, and now he's a teacher. So, he says, "So, don't give up, you know, education is the key to success." Did an excellent, excellent job, so I just, it was great being there last night. In addition to that, Madam Chair and Board of Supervisors, we've all heard of McGrath State Beach Park being scheduled to close on September the 6th. And this is because apparently they cannot fix a sewer line that costs about $500,000. So, I would like to direct our staff, you know, our county park, our CEO's staff, to report back to the Board of Supervisors at a subsequent meeting on probably working on some cost analysis on how to keep McGrath Park open, and at least, at the minimum, you know, through the summer months, because my understanding is that we have quite a few families that, they come to McGrath Park to enjoy the cool weather that we have here in Oxnard and Ventura. So, and I've been asked by quite a few individuals, in fact, over at the parade, I got asked last night at the college and at the MYCOP, this is why we're closing this park, you know, I tell them it's a state park. But I would like to find out if, or ask our staff to come up with an analysis on what it would take to open that, keep that park open. I've also been talking to a similar man, Das Williams, and my staff, we've been researching on ways to keep it open and how to get funding. My understanding is that the state is saying that, well, that we can probably lease it for about three years, but my understanding is that we need at least 10 years to make it work. Probably the first year, I'm sure that, my understanding is that we'll have a negative, but the second, third, and the years after that, up to 10 years, that we can make it work for our families. And McGrath, you know, is a very popular park in Oxnard and Ventura, and it's really basically a year-round park. And I think that the county, or the state, excuse me, is closing this park right in the midst of summer, when we need it the most. And in fact, there's a great article in the Star that came out on August the 6th edition where the Coca-Cola Company is now hosting an online favorite park contest where they're going to award $100,000 to the best park or the best theme of the park, or favorite park of parks that are being closed across the United States. And my understanding is that we're in about eighth place in that contest. And I understand there's a Facebook page where you can log in, it's called Save McGrath State Park. And I understand that we've had quite a few fans from Ventura County signing in Save McGrath State Park. And we could surely use this $100,000 to assist us if that is the case, once our staff analyzes whether we should keep it open. And I would like to ask, you know, the support of the board to bring this as a future agenda item. And that's my report.
And Supervisor Bennett?
Thank you very much. One, it was, it felt good at the fair to see Supervisor Long there in her pink car supporting breast cancer. Supervisor Zaragoza on the judges' stand, I've been judging the fair the last five years, but I was going to be in the parade this time, I mean, judging at the fair, the parade. And Supervisor Zaragoza was able to pick up the slack there and do the judging, and then to get to ride on the Boys and Girls Club float. Just great to be with the Boys and Girls Club, a group, an organization that our Board of Supervisors supports so much and stuff, and to have that enthusiasm of all of those kids and, you know, what's the Boys and Girls Club, the positive place for kids, be enchanted all the way down. Also, Saturday night, got to bump into two other supervisors again, Supervisor Long and Supervisor Parks at the Bugatti Ball for the American Cancer Society. So, while Supervisor Zaragoza was over at the MYCOP event, we also had that event going on also, it was a very successful fundraiser. And then on Sunday morning, I just, for the benefit of all the board members to make you aware, it's something that we support a lot, the Ventura Homeless Prevention Fund, got to attend the Unitarian Church. The Unitarian Church here in Ventura has decided to allocate all of their plate collections for the whole month of August to fund the Homeless Prevention Fund. And it's a church that's been very proactive, but it's a very generous thing to take all of their donations, and you don't hear churches doing that very often. So, Cindy Cantal and my staff was able to make the presentation about the Homeless Prevention Fund. And thank you very much, I appreciate that.
Thank you, Supervisors. It was a busy weekend, and while I wasn't in the parade or judging it, I did go to the fair and got to see some wonderful sheep races with little kids on top, holding on with all their might. And it was really one of the best fairs I've been to of the years that I've gone, really enjoyed it. Also, was able to attend the Kitty Cottage Grand Opening. This is a Sharon Miller in my district donated fund so that cats can roam free, and they get their own little cottage attached to our shelter there, and they make it easier, I think, for people to adopt them. You really see their personalities, and there were some very special ones there, and it was a very enjoyable event. In addition to that, I was able to go to two dinners this weekend, both the Bugatti Ball for the American Cancer Society, but also Senior Concerns had their ultimate dining experience. And Senior Concerns provides a lot of wonderful services for seniors out in the Caneo Valley in particularly, including, you know, bringing meals on wheels to seniors in their home, which is a lot more than just bringing the meals, but actually bringing someone to the homes and bringing friendship, as well as a very important adult daycare center that they have for, gives a bit of a respite to spouses or children of elder parents who need a little assistance, people with Alzheimer's, they can have them stay there during the day, and that's a huge help. And it was an incredibly successful event, so it was nice to see those funds raised. Also, I note that in that parade was our Newberry Park resident Hank Lakai, and he was our grand marshal in the classic horse-drawn carriage, our Ventura County Parade Grand Marshal, and that was very nice. I know it's also the anniversary of his 80th birthday, so it was a very nice gesture, and a well-deserved one to make Hank the fair grand marshal. And then finally, I did want to comment on just how seamless the transition has been, I think, from going from Butch Britt to Dave Fleisch, and what a great job that he has been doing. You always worry about what's going to happen, because I think he's probably one of the most pivotal, important people to the Board of Supervisors. He deals with all the transportation issues, and just appreciate the fact that he has maintained that great engineer objectivity that is so important in those decisions. You may not get everything you want, but you know that it's completely justified what you are getting. So, appreciate his good work and seeing that we are doing all that we can for our roads in our county. And then note that the City of Thousand Oaks just got a $450,000 grant for a bike lane along Lynn Road, so that it's nice to see that there are still some funds out there and improvements can be made. I know Supervisor Zaragoza is looking for funds for McGrath State Beach. It's nice to see that there, you know, sometimes you can get these good funds and help the community with some good facilities. And then I know you're all wondering what this week is in August. It happens to be the second week, which is National Smile Week, so we all have to put on a happy face and smile. And then today specifically is Book Lover's Day, so we do encourage you not necessarily to get on the internet, but actually grab a book, sit in the shade, and relax with a good book, so. With that then, that concludes the board comments.
Sure, can I share one more thing?
Yes.
And I was trying to mention it because I see my staff member, Lulu's here, but on that Facebook for Save McGrath, you know, my staff has all signed in, you know, to Facebook, so log into Facebook and support McGrath in the Save McGrath Park, you know, I think it's important that. Hopefully, maybe we get this $100,000 from Coca-Cola. And also, and Hank Lakai, and I called him the next day, and I told him he looked great, he looked like Lashan LeRoux out there in his black outfit. He says it was great, but he says, "You know what, John, I couldn't see because those horses were huge," because it was a horse-drawn cart that he was in, but he had a great time. And I want to thank him for too, you know, thank you for reminding me about Hank Lakai.
Thank you. I'm sure we'll have another opportunity to honor him. I know we've got a resolution coming forward too for his birthday. So, with that then, we'll go to our regular agenda, and our first agenda item is item 30, and this is regarding our in-home support services and some funding for that. Mr. Fisher?
Chair Parks, members of the board, Mr. Powers. The item in front of you is to accept funding from the Human Services Agency in the amount of $99,400 and the establishment of one fixed-term position for a public health nurse. Once the funding, we hope the funding doesn't go away, but we've got it for this year. If the funding does go away, that position will go away as well. Excuse me, I'm open for any questions.
Are there any questions on this item? I think that's the responsible way to use that fund so that we don't have the issue of a permanent employee that we have to work with if we lose the funding for. So, we have a motion from Supervisor Bennett, a second from Supervisor Long, and Supervisor Long, did you have a comment?
Well, just that we know that the in-home support services is a challenging program, but also the policy of being able to keep people in their home and support it and all the care needs met is a more cost-effective policy than frankly ending up in convalescent homes and otherwise. And being fixed-term makes it something that we can continue to evaluate the effectiveness.
You know, and I also note that it is a very growing industry, a lot of private companies out there providing services to the homes for seniors particularly. And at the Senior Concerns event I went to, it was brought up that most states have actually a certification program for these companies that have their employees go into the homes, and it might be something we might want to look into also, because you want to make sure you have good quality in situations. We have a motion and a second, if we could all please vote?
Madam Chair, real quick, I want to thank Barry too for the work he's doing. I've been working with Among's Friends over in Oxnard, and of course, you know, they're not an in-home type service, but some of the seniors or individuals go to their place, and they get fed, and they interact with other individuals, so that is in connection with the program, I think, is working great, so I want to thank you for that too.
Thank you. And have we all voted? We won't call anybody's name out specifically who may not have voted. That's unanimous. And also, Mr. Fisher, you'll be doing item 31, which is regarding Adolescent Family Life Program.
Yes, approval to accept funding amounts of $144,439 in the addition of two fixed-term positions for the Adolescent Family Life Program, and open for any questions you may have on this.
And this is ratification due to timing issues?
Correct.
So, thank you. We have a motion from Supervisor Bennett and a second from Supervisor Long, if we could all please vote. Thank you for the
Thank you.
Great presentation there. It passes unanimously, and we'll go to item 32, and this is Supervisor Bennett's item regarding support for Assembly Bill.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. This is support for AB 529. You know, when the Transportation Department brought their speed survey information to us two weeks ago, I said I'd try to work with local legislators, change state law. In taking a look at that, we found out that there actually is state legislation that's out there that does some of what we want to do. There's a current bill pending, and it undoes some of the restrictions that were placed on local governments by the state in 2004. The bill has bipartisan, broad bipartisan support. It's already passed the Assembly. Locally, both Assembly members, Cameron Smythe and Das Williams, are listed as co-sponsors in many cities, including Thousand Oaks here in Ventura County, support the bill. The bill will take us back to pre-2004 situation in that it'll allow us to round speed limits down to the lower 5 mile per hour increment rather than up. And so, that's one of the things that we think makes common sense. However, it doesn't do the other thing, which is allow us to round down and then do an additional 5 miles an hour speed limits based on local conditions. So, it doesn't fully return us to the pre-2004 situation, but it is a significant improvement from where we are now, and particularly addresses a concern that I expressed, which is, I don't want to be in a situation where you always have to round up and have everybody drive just a little bit over the speed limit and then have escalating speed limits on our local street. It certainly will help us keep Ventura County, I think, more walkable, more amenable to bike riding, and ultimately safer if we're not having all of this increase in terms of that. So, it's not the only thing that we can do and the only thing out there, but it is one of the things that I think we should be on record in terms of supporting, so that'd be my motion. So that'd be my motion.
And I appreciate that Mr. Fleisch did bring this before us, so we know that he's going to be going out there and looking at the speeds on roads so that we're aware of that. And I think that I certainly have concern, I know other supervisors do also, in their own districts, on some of these roads, particularly, for example, some residential roads in neighborhoods. We just see that we are apprised and be able to give our input before those roads are, you know, potentially have their speeds raised. And I think that's really important. Supervisor Long?
I would agree with that, too, and appreciate that you brought this forward and that we can support this. But the issue of local conditions is something we should always have a say in. How many driveways intersect an area? And I know that transportation does a great job in looking at the engineering challenges of contours of roads and the related speed issues, but to be able to look at that and engage the public in the neighborhood, because the worst thing we could do is to raise the speed limit, post it, and then hear from the public, because they get very upset about not, one, not having the information, but, two, being able to give that local input and experience that they have in living in that area. So, I appreciate we're taking this step.
Madam Chair, too, I also like to support that, because I know in my district, we've had quite a few pedestrian injuries, you know, because of speeding, and especially in Oxnard Boulevard and Ventura and Gonzales Road, where the speed limit can get pretty high. So, I really appreciate that Supervisor, and that's important.
You know, and also, the importance of having the posted speed limit is so that the speeds can be enforced. However, we also know that there are things that we can do and we have done that can actually lower speeds. So, you know, before we jump into raising the speed on a road, we need to be able to, you know, look at all the options. And so, again, I appreciate being able to have that input and also support the motion, because we don't need to be making the speed limit signs faster than the cars are traveling, which is essentially what this would allow for if we don't get this passed. Okay, we have a unanimous vote on that, and we'll move on to our next item, which is Item 33, and this is Supervisor Foy and an off-site meeting.
Yeah, I appreciate that, the opportunity again to bring the government to the people out in Simi. And on October 18th, it's been worked out between Roberta and the city manager, so I would recommend that we would do that, if I can get your support. I think if people enjoy it, we'd come out to them. But that would be my motion, but also, I have to read this under the, there it says, "Approve Recommendations 1 and 2 with the following modifications to Recommendation 1. Recommend that the board cancel their regular meeting of October 18th, 2011. Hold a special meeting on October 18th, 2011 at 6:00 p.m. at the City of Simi Valley Council Chambers at 2929 Tappo Canyon Road."
And that comes with ice cream, correct?
What? Yes.
That's right.
I don't know, yeah.
Friendly crowd, right?
Friendly crowd.
And we have a motion from Supervisor Foy, a second from Supervisor Bennett, and if we could all please vote.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We look forward to the off-site meeting, bringing government to the people. Our next item on the agenda is Item 34, and this is regarding an electric gate on Old Baldwin Road. Mr. Fleisch.
Morning, Chair Parks, Mr. Powers, supervisors. For the record, again, I'm Dave Fleisch and Director of Transportation Department. The item before you is regarding installation of a gate at Old Baldwin Road. Part of completing the Old Baldwin Road trailhead portion of the Watershed Protection District, California River Parkway project, is the installation of electronic sliding gate to replace a swing gate that's been in place for more than 40 years. In reviewing the permit for this, my department discovered that we were unable to find any information at the board here to actually approve the installation of a gate on Old Baldwin Road. So the purpose of this, of this letter is to formalize the placement of that gate. The Fire Department, California Highway Patrol, and Ojai Valley Police have notified, been notified of this gate, and they have no objection, and they will have access through that area as well.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I was wondering why you're bringing that to us. It sounds like something you could do, but I guess now we understand why.
We've been lawbreakers for 40 years.
(laughing)
Smooth recommended action.
Thank you.
Thank you for the diligence in terms of catching this.
Second by Supervisor Long, if we could all please vote. And Mr. Fleisch, I think you're up for Item 35 also.
Yes, ma'am. Currently, the county has, again, this board letter is relation to reciprocal agreements with the cities. Currently, the county has general services agreements with many cities that allows various agencies and departments within the county to complete work for those cities. However, those agreements don't provide the reverse, which allows the cities to do work for us. As you are aware, we have many roads within Ventura County that cross the boundaries of unincorporated and incorporated areas, and thus are maintained both by the county transportation department and by one or more cities. Several of those, Harbor Boulevard, Victoria, Grand Avenue in Ojai, Las Poses, Potrero, all of those are roads where we own a portion of the road and someone else owns another portion. Although we've completed work under those general services agreements on those roads in the past, it's been administratively sort of awkward, because it's a generalized agreement. Further, we've been approached in a couple of instances by cities who are doing some work and would like to coordinate with us for them to perhaps do the work for us, and we've really not had a mechanism for doing that. The purpose of these general reciprocal agreements before you today is to establish a common mechanism for the Transportation Department to receive and provide work either from or to the cities on a reimbursable basis. You authorize, you execute the agreements, we'll then begin to discuss these with the cities and enter in an agreement with each city. This is just a general agreement. It doesn't obligate us to do any work or obligate any money. The way the projects would be done is on an individual work, excuse me, work agreement, which is a template that's part of this, and we would follow our normal procedures. If a contract that we were going to do either direction with more than $100,000, we would bring that to your board for approval.
Thank you. Are there any comments?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I just would like to say that, I'd just like to compliment Dave. I mean, wherever we can demonstrate cooperation and efficiencies between various government agencies, I think the public wins, and the public likes to see that. And so, I think this is forward-thinking on your part to look at that and say, "Hey, it's a one-way street at this point in time," and to come up with this setup, it makes just a lot of common sense, and that's what we need. So, thank you.
Just a quick question. Would this allow us now to have those proactive conversations with jurisdictions when we know they're going to be doing work on a road that crosses the county, into the county line, and join them in that work?
Yes, ma'am. We've done that in the past, but what this allows, for example, we had an instance a couple of years ago where Camarillo was doing some paving, and we actually had them do paving for us, and then after we did that, we discovered that we really didn't have a mechanism to do that. And so, we want to set this in place so that we can do that ahead of time tomorrow.
Could all please vote? Thank you. That passes unanimously, and on to Item 36, which is a lease with the Sheriff's Department, and Mr. Fager.
Good morning, again, Supervisor Parks, members of board, Mr. Powers. This is a lease for office and warehouse space in the City of Camarillo. It's a 10-year agreement. The lease is fixed for the first two years of the term. There are four months of free rent. There will be increases in the out years, but because we're starting at such a low rate, the rate at the end of the lease will be 92 cents a square foot, which is less than, we believe, current market office rates are in City Camarillo, consolidating out of four existing lease bases into one. The Sheriff's Department is here to answer any questions about the program changes.
Are there any questions? Do you have any comments?
I like the idea of 14% less, 22% more. 14% less cost and 22% more space. That's...
I'm kind of excited about this for two reasons. One is that scarce public dollar is being utilized appropriately here. But on the front side of this, it's kind of been a dream of mine for a couple of years now to get towards. It's the centralization of some key services, and your moment of inspiration touched on it. As a team, we all need some training wheels. Things are moving very fast. And this collates crime analysis, our professional staff, with our intelligence units, with our investigation units, and that is a good mix to have under one roof and operate together as a team, and it's going to lead to more efficiency in how we support patrol and how we deliver services in our community. This building also affords a secondary place of continuation of government in time of emergency. It has that capability. On the other side, it gives us the ability to really look at our support staff. When we're joining four different operations into one, there are efficiencies that are going to be made there outside the reduction in the lease costs and the utility costs that we're going to experience. So it's going to go clearly over $200,000 every year in benefits of that tax dollar reduction.
Excellent. Supervisor Long?
And the central location, too, to be able to then, with the special services, to get out to the community countywide, just has to be a plus.
Thank you. I believe so also.
And I also agree. This, bringing those together, that efficiency's got to be great. People working together, making all that work. I think it's a smart thing. I also do appreciate, I know you tried to work with the airports, try to see if you could make it work where you're at, and I do appreciate that hard work to make that, see if it worked. But it sounds like this is going to be the best thing for you. So good.
Todd's going to, we're going to have a challenge now, but we'll work our way through it.
And Madam Chair, too, I know we discussed it at the Airport Authority, and Todd tried very hard to keep you there, but I think this is an excellent opportunity for the Sheriff's Department.
I really want to thank Public Works and Philigar's team, along with Commander Wade and Captain Kerr for all the work that went into this. There's a lot of detail work, and we're sure we have this vetted through.
Good job.
Mr. Powers?
I was just going to compliment the leadership of the Sheriff's Department and Public Works in getting, to this point, centralizing and lower costs. And I also like the reference to the strategic plan in the board letter, improve service and lower costs. So, it's great work.
Thank you.
All right, our first strategic plan checked. We could all please vote?
Keep dreaming.
Thank you. That passes unanimously. A nice item.
And thank the Sheriff. Well, he's back there.
And our next item is Item 38, which is the Criminal Justice Administrative Fee, and this is also you.
Good morning again, Chair Parks, fellow board members, CEO. What we're asking here is to adopt a resolution authorizing the increase in the Criminal Justice Administration fee that's charged to convicted persons to reimburse for the administrative costs associated with the jail booking process. This has been cumbersome to look through. As you can see, our appropriations for the revenue that we expect with this increase is the same as we expected last year. We came close to meeting last year, and you would think with an increase in fee, we'd realize more revenue. But we have found that bookings are down, therefore we found convictions are down. And that's how we've modeled the past and the current, that we think even with this increase in fee, we're not going to experience any increased revenue in this area. We've also seen some problems on how the fee is collected and how we can identify and really work towards where's this fee coming from in relation to how many people have been convicted. And one example is if someone was arrested for vandalism, and they're ordered, and they're convicted, and they're ordered to pay $2,000 in restitution, it could take two years at $100 a month to get through the restitution, and that's number one priority, is to get that victim compensated as it should. Booking fees are number four down on the priority list. And we've found that there are times when judges might waive that fee. More times, if they're not going to waive it, because I believe that's rare, someone doesn't have the ability to pay, they end up spending time in jail for every 80 something dollars of the fee they'll do jail time, so we don't collect the fees that way. And the whole accounting principle on how we locate who's paid and carryovers from previous years is very complicated. So we go to the model of how many people have been convicted, we look at past averages, and we try to do our appropriations from there. We do see that we're going to be lucky to make our revenue, because our jail population today was down in the low 1300s. So, a lot of things are working out there on why crime is down, and I'm one not to say that it's really based solely on economics, because since 2008, that hasn't been the case, and we still see declining numbers. Our challenge will be the realignment inmates, not the new arrests coming out of our county.
Right. Supervisor Long, you have a comment?
So, two questions. One on the collection side of it is that our collections are aggressive, but not 100%?
The collections are difficult to discern how they occur, because probably there's an IT solution. That's the way I've been looking at it and what I'm working towards, so that we can better identify it. I think our courts have been aggressive at collecting it when the monies are there. And I think appropriately, the priorities are important, and that victim is number one. So that ability to pay can turn into more jail time. But I would like to see an IT solution where we can make sure that these people are accountable for getting that dollar to us.
Well, because wouldn't the jail time be more expensed to us than the fee may be?
Yes, it is.
Yeah. So, an IT solution would be a better path.
Well, it's also nice to see a little bit of relief from the overcrowding of the jails, so it's a positive, you know. It's kind of like the tobacco tax, you know. It's good that people aren't smoking as much, but we don't get as much revenue, so.
Clearly, that's the way we'd rather have it.
I think so. We have a motion from Supervisor Foy, a second from Supervisor Bennett, and an opportunity once again to vote. Thank you. That passes unanimously. Thank you for the report.
Thank you.
Good work. Our next item is a policy matter, and it's a recommendation. It doesn't say by whom, does it?
By Supervisor Bennett.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I'd like to ask us to appoint Ashley Reviero to the Alcohol Drug Advisory Board, extend the term of Ascensionalia to the Mental Health Board.
Okay, it's two appointments, second by Supervisor Long, and that passes unanimously. Once again, we didn't point out who that same person was. Item 40 is a recommendation for myself to appoint Betsy Connolly, who is a Board of Director of the Caneo Valley Unified School District, to the Community Action of Ventura County. An excellent addition. She's filling in for the belated loss of Marie Panic, and I know Betsy was close with Marie also, and feels that this is a nice way to continue Marie's legacy, so I'm delighted to be able to appoint Betsy.
An important organization, an organization in important transition right now, so I hope you'll be able to point that out.
Yes, she will be an excellent asset.
With the recent, yeah, with the recent return of the million dollars that could have been used for other social service programs.
And their executive director is no longer on board right now, so.
Betsy is an elected official?
Yes, Betsy is an elected member of the
I have an appointment I'm trying to find, to fill too, for an elected official to fill, because that body has great responsibility to, for safety net people that we serve, and I think that there have been concerns as to how the dollars have been used wisely, and no one likes to see any dollars returned. And unfortunately, that took place, so.
And that has to be an elected official.
We appoint the elected officials. There's also a low-income representative, too. We have a really good person on there now who just turned into an elected official. I know that she wants to remain. And this body, the Community Action Committee, actually didn't used to have as much, you know, revenue.
That's right.
But now that it does, it is all the more important that they are doing the best they can with those funds. We do have the motion and an opportunity to vote. We could all do so. That passes unanimously. And then our last item before our time certens is our Correspondence Agenda, Items 41 through 43. Motion from Supervisor Foy, and a second from Supervisor Long. And with that, we can almost call that unanimous. We have a couple of closed-session items that we can go into closed session, be back at 10:00 a.m. for our 10:00 a.m. time certain. And are we anticipating any resolution or announcements?
Yes, we are. One announcement.
That's a yes?
Yes, one announcement.
Okay, so we are anticipating an announcement from our closed session. We'll see when we're back here at 10:00 a.m.
Good morning, welcome back to the Board of Supervisors for August 9th, 2011. A patriotic day as I see these patriotic ties and a very special moment in our county's history. This is a resolution that Supervisor Long will be bringing forward. I'll pass it to you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and all Supervisors bringing this forward. I took a very selfish protocol here and said, "He's in my district and I'm the long-term on the board." But to be able to do this to everyone who's here to thank John Nicole for his years of public service for this county and for the public throughout his entire career is really what we're here for and to celebrate with him as he takes on a new path and to, again, thank him and wish him the very best. John started his public service career with the city of Burbank in October of 76 as an administrative assistant in the finance department. He rose through the ranks, becoming the Management Services Director, responsibility over finance, information systems, human resources, benefit administration, training and development, and labor relations. On August of 2003, John accepted his position with our county as our Chief Deputy Executive Officer in the CEO's office, responsible for labor relations and risk management, and rose to the position of Assistant CEO, Director of Human Resources, responsible again for labor relations, risk management, personnel services, and benefits. John served as a Master's in Public Administration instructor, and still does, teaching graduate courses in personnel, labor relations, entrepreneurial management, and finance at Cal State University Northridge since 1990, and graduate courses in public finance at the University of Southern California since 1995. So he has certainly educated numerous employees along the way on the fine art of labor relations, personnel management, and risk management. It's certainly been because of his hard work and his dedication to public service that he was recognized by many over the years with a number of awards and accolades bestowed upon him by the California State Senate for the Volunteer Service Award, the California State Assembly for Community Diversity Dialogue Recognition, the Los Angeles Board of Supervisors Commendation for Community Service, the American Society for Public Administration Academic Excellence Award, University of Southern California Outstanding Professor of the Year Award, and California State University Northridge Excellent in Public Service Award. So his commitment to public service has truly been deeply rooted. His ability to be an open and honest communicator has earned great respect from labor tables and management over the years. Accomplished mentor, thoughtful, diligent, honorable colleague for many to both emulate and to have John as a mentor was truly a gift for many who have had that opportunity. He might be retiring public service, but he's going to continue to serve his expertise in human resources at his new place of employment, the Mad River Hospital. A 78-bed acute care medical facility serving Arcata's 17,000 residents, located just six miles and, as John says, three stop signs from his home in Arcadia. I also had a note from his wife, Jerry, and as the resolution concludes, by wishing Mr. Nicole, thanking him first for his 33 years of loyal and dedicated public service, and wishing Mr. Nicole and his wife, Jerry, many more years of sweet fire harmony. So I said, "What is that?" Maybe I didn't want to know, but I asked. And John and two of his seminary friends went to the Hyatt Hotel Airport in 1975. And while they were there, after they'd had a hard day at the races, they listened to a group play, and the group was called Sweetfire. And that's where he met Jerry, and two years later, they were married and have been married ever since. And his plans to get back to his home in Arcadia, still keeping his little home away from home now in Port Wayne, ME, will, I think, bring both great reward and pleasure to both he and Jerry, as, again, they start this new path of his both wonderful life and career, but also the next adventure. So I will step down with all of the board members. We're going to present this resolution. Mr. Nicole, Mr. John, would you please step forward?
This many years in labor relations, I don't generally let this people, many people, be between me and the door.
John, if you wouldn't mind, just have a quick seat, because we have some public requests to speak first. So always the public to speak first, and then we'll let you turn your back.
So we have representing the Ventura County Deputy Sheriff's Association, Matt Finley, followed by Rick Schimmel, and then if you'd like to come up to the podium.
Madam Chair, Board, CEO, County Council, John, this isn't a roast, so you're okay. But you can't go out the door without those of us who've had to deal with you, literally, and at the same time, come to know not only your integrity, but how you are as a person, the character that you bring to the table. When you have labor relations and you have contracts, not everybody is going to get what they want, so you work to the compromise. And over the years, that's exactly what we've come to. We've come to a compromise, but you and I've also become very, very good friends. So when we hit the table, the friendship's off and the war is on. But we leave the table, and we go have dinner, and we relax, and we talk about other things. And to show that, now Sheriff Dean, then Chief Dean, made a comment at a retirement and promotion in the Star Room years back, that you and I shook hands, gave a hug, and talked for quite a while. And at that time, Chief Dean said, "I've never seen an HR negotiation person be able to have a relationship with a union labor management person like that. That shows the compromise, and that shows the kind of person that you are." John, I'm going to miss you. I think all of us are going to miss you here, everybody from management, from labor management, everybody that you deal with when it comes to contract. You believe in getting to a compromise. You believe in getting to the best result and, at the same time, giving the best service to this county. And for that, I hope you the best, we wish you the best, Monica and I do, for you and Jerry, and for everybody here. I think that you have really brought that relation back to the table in human relationships. So, John, thank you very much. Good luck to you. Door is always open.
Thank you. That does say a lot. Mr. Schimmel, followed by Greg Thayer with the California Nurses Association.
Good morning, Richard Schimmel, Madam Chair, members of the Board, Mr. Powers, Ms. Cohen. First, I'd like to echo Matt's sentiments about working with John. It has been a personal pleasure, and it has been a relationship built upon communication and candor, and I believe both the county and VCDSA have been the beneficiaries of that relationship. On this occasion, I also believe it's worth acknowledging that your Board's decision a little over eight years ago to create a Director of Industrial Relations, essentially, and to make that individual the county's lead negotiator proved to be a critical step in advancing labor relations. From our perspective, retaining someone with John's background, experience, education, maturity, teaching ability, and personality, investing him with the confidence of the Board and the CEO, and the ability to report directly to the Board and the CEO, has made all the difference. The atmosphere of, I'll say, labor unease that had been fueled by the days of the Posture Committee and what seemed to be layers of decision-making, and unclear accountability quickly faded behind us, and I believe all of us have performed better because of that. In light of that, it is our hope that your Board will continue down this path, strive to find a replacement for John, whose background, education, and experience are similar, whose personality and maturity are similar, I don't know about the shock of white hair, but perhaps, and who will continue to have the Board's confidence and the ability to report directly when it comes to the important issues that are the subject of labor negotiations, especially in the current climate. I believe the need for continuity in this area could not be greater. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schimmel. Mr. Thayer, followed by Rita Batchley.
Hello. I just wanted to come down and congratulate John on his retirement. I've negotiated with the county for many, many years for the nurses at the county hospital, and I think that the last several times that we sat at the table, you know, we had the feeling that the person who was sitting on the other side had the confidence of the Board and the ability to strike a deal, and actually, the desire to strike a deal, you know, that was in everyone's best interest. I think that John is the kind of public servant that the Board, you know, will never be able to find his equal, but hopefully, like Mr. Schimmel said, you'll, you know, try and find somebody who can, you know, give confidence to the labor, you know, management relationship the way that he has. Congratulations, John, and have fun in all tourist.
And our final public speaker card is Rita Batchley, the California Nurses Association.
Good morning, Board, and thanks for the opportunity to speak and to thank John for his wonderful years of service. I've been negotiating with the county for the LVNs, RNs, and site techs of the county for before and after John, and it's been a pleasure working with him, as well as keeping up the communication between this huge bureaucracy that we have and maintaining our, not only contract negotiations for pay increases, but for better working conditions and conditions that have helped serve our community by making our jobs easier and more effective so that we can serve our county. These are going to be huge shoes to fill, and the time's coming on where we see more and more of the cookie cutter contracts coming up, and we didn't have that with John, and we really, really want to send out our thanks to him, and you look terrific. You're going to be great.
Don't let the mild manner fool you at the bargaining table. She's the toughest person in the room, with or without a gun.
Thank you. Well, I would like to also just compliment you on your work for the county. You know, we hear such wonderful things from the union, and that says a lot, but, you know, from a management perspective, too, we also very much appreciate your work for us and being able to follow through on what the Board sees as needed. And, you know, one example, I think, of your, the great bar that you set, was the be able to actually have a union open up a contract when they didn't need to, to take a reduction, you know? I mean, that says a lot, I think. Your professionalism and your word meant a lot to everybody, and that is the most important thing a person has, is their word. You have earned a lot of respect because you respect others, and I know it's very much appreciated, and it's great to see the turnout here for that. And I know you have a wonderful future ahead of you. It sounds like a great place to live. You've got family, you've got a neat job, and I believe the Mad River Brewing Company's in that area, where they got some good steel headquarters, so. Any other Supervisors there, Rosa?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I'd also like to thank John. You and I had the opportunity to work with John for the last three years, and he was always the type of person that was available to answer questions, you know, and especially for employee rights and benefits. And we talked about 401Ks and other investments, and in fact, being the new person here, he said, "John, how come you haven't joined the 401K?", you know, so. And other, you know, benefits that my employees were not taking too, and sure, other employees had not taken, but I think you're an excellent negotiator, and it was shared by the union heads here, you know, that they respect you tremendously, as well as we do. And I want to thank you, and I want to wish you a happy retirement and your new job. You know, like me, when I left my office, it was, my wife says, "Are you going to retire?" I says, "Yes, over to the county." But I wish a lot of love to you and your wife, and I know you're going to do good. And I'm glad you're retaining your home here in Port Wayne, ME, right next to Oxford. Port Wayne is a sister city to Oxford.
Supervisor Floyd?
Yeah, John, it's, you know, we are going to get rid of these things. They're going to be down so we can see people, right, Roberta? One of the things, John, I think there's just some words to describe you, and one of those would be professional. There's no question, I think all of us understand your professionalism. You are a professional in your industry, and you show it. The words that have been talked, the labor bargaining units who have talked about the professional side of you, they've seen that. There's also the other side that we saw a lot of, with creativity. I think trying to find a compromise, trying to find ways, you were very creative in trying to work with both sides to make it work for all of us. I mean, we've got certain restrictions on this side, and they've got certain needs on that side. You always found those ways, and I thought that was some special thing that you had. But the other thing I think that really worked was your integrity. I think we all knew that when John said something, he believed, "I know..." We talked about maybe doing something else, and we'd say, "Hold it. I told them this, and my integrity's on the line, and our Board integrity's on the line." And I think that was key, and I see that's what made the difference with the units, and just your relationship with people, is your integrity. And then your personability, you're just, you know, friendly, enjoyable kind of person that is just enjoyable to be around. And I think the people, the friendships and everything else that you have here in a short time, that, you know, you've been here doing this great work, and then also as a hard-working person, I think that would be something. You always were putting your time in, always trying to find ways to make things work, and I think that's something special. You've done a tremendous job for Ventura County, and we will not be able to replace John Nicole, no question. But I think one of the things, for me personally, is I just, to call you a friend, and I thank you so very much, John. Thanks for what you've done.
And Supervisor Bennett?
Thank you very much. I remember the long search that Johnny Johnson went into in terms of trying to find the right person to come in for this job, and it was not something that happened quickly over the course of a month. It was a long search, and I think we all recognize it was the most important hire that was going to be made outside of the hiring of Johnny Johnson, because labor relations are such a big part of county negotiations and the county's budget, and everything goes on. And so it was real apprehension that, I think, we, you know, brought somebody in and, hey, as was alluded to, we certainly had a need for a change. And John, you, it was remarkable, you just hit it out of the ballpark and changed the dynamics tremendously and set a standard out there, I think, that really helped with the long-term goal of having people have confidence and trust in government, that what you heard is what you got. And that is a legacy that, you know, CEOs leave legacies at places, but that's a legacy that will pay dividends for the citizens of Ventura County, for the labor force in Ventura County, for management of Ventura County for a long time to come. And so I just want you to know from the standpoint of citizens, I think, just tremendous excellent service that you gave by combining, as Supervisor Floyd pointed out, a great variety of skills, creativity, and ability, and all of that together to make that happen. And I just want to sincerely let you know how much I appreciate that change that you were able to engineer here. And it reminds me a little bit of the football coach. It's always better to follow the football coach that had a losing season, right? And now you've got the football coach that's won some championships and stuff, and we all have to recognize there's an adjustment to make here. all have to—to have to recognize there's an adjustment to make here for somebody else to come in and hope—we can have everybody be able to play a part in trying to continue this good success that is the legacy that you've established here in Ventura County. Thank you very much.
And being the good HR person you are, you could probably help us find a replacement. Mr. Powers?
Thank you. Well, John, speaking of that ability to replace you, I think you are irreplaceable. Certainly something we're going to try to do, but you are, in my view, the foremost expert in labor relations and human resources in the state, so it's a tall task, to be sure. I always think of John also as the professor. I don't think he ever met a chalkboard—he didn't like. In every meeting, he'd go up there, but that was the professor sharing his vast knowledge, and it was wonderful, and I appreciate your good advice and counsel these many years, and the importance of the relationships you've built. This is just a wonderful testament to your character and integrity here today, and something we need to continue going forward. Just a brief story of the importance of relationships to John. As I understand it, a few years ago, he befended a custodian here and developed a very strong relationship, and that custodian passed away unexpectedly. And John organized a memorial service for him right here at the Government Center, inviting as many members of the county family as well as his own family there, and they were all very, very touched by the relationships that their dad and brother had developed here at the county, and I know it just meant so much to them, but that just speaks to the quality of your character and who you are. So, we're going to miss you. We've been fortunate to have your skills here, and I'm proud to wear my John Nicole signature tie here today. Thank you very much.
And Supervisor Longden. Okay, well, I guess we have an opportunity now to hear from you, Mr. Nicole, if you'd like to come up to the podium.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. I should remember my own dictates, which has "Be brief and be seated if you have a long day." I want to thank Tom Womack for having recruited me to come here while I was making a presentation at a labor conference, and Johnny Johnson for hiring me despite the fact that I didn't look—or sound the part. And then the board for giving me the opportunity to convey the principles, practices, and real understanding you wanted to have with your employees. That's really all I was brought here to do, and we were able to do it successfully. Following Johnny's support, Marty and now Mike have provided that continued support for that cooperative, collaborative approach to working with our employees and their representatives, and it's been—and will continue to be very effective. I want to thank all of the executives and the other elected officials for their support during the time I'm here. We couldn't have settled many of these agreements without Christine's willingness. You talk about flexible. She's had to—she and Louise have made the system do things that they didn't think were possible, and I don't think there's anybody in the world who works harder than Louise Webster. And for the support of County Council's office, for Noel and Leroy and Mike, we thank you very much. And all the other members of the executive team, both past and present, their support has really been invaluable to me. To the men and women who represent these unions, they have become friends, and one of the things they've taught me over the years, there is no good or right or wrong at this, it's just the principles you bring to this table and who do you represent. They represent their people very well, and they've taught me about two old Roman values: strength and honor. When they give their word, it's good, and they stand behind what they do. That made this possible. You were willing to do it, they were willing to do it. And that's why a unit would step up and have the courage to open a contract, address the issues, and resolve it in hopes of a better future, and they did it. There's no one second to Rick Schimmel, Chris Mahan, Matt Finley, the strength Greg, Rita, the members of the union—it's a shame the SEIU people aren't here—and Diane Hubbard from probation. They're all very strong and very capable people, and Silver hadn't in silver. Steve—as Johnny Johnson used to say about Steve Silver, he is the gold standard in labor. And if you don't believe that, price one of his contracts. The real support then comes down to, on my side of the street, the people who I had the opportunity to hire and to work for me. So Shannon, Chuck, Kelly, Harold, and the men and women who work with them. Frankly, my job is to get them resources, be sure they have the authority to do their jobs, and stay out of their way, and they do that job very well. I've always told them, "One morning, you guys will find me face down on the carpet, and you'll be able to keep doing this job, and people—it will go okay." And they're capable of doing that now. So I am a very fortunate person that all the men and women who work for me have made my life simpler, and for that, I am grateful to them. And finally, I would like to thank my wife, who she and the boys have put up with, long hours, weekends working, the days of carrying the phone when you're on vacation and you get called, and she looks at me and says, "You know, for the next two hours, your brain's going to be at work. So either put the phone away, or don't go on vacation." After 34 years of that wisdom, I have learned she is in all likelihood correct. It's—to her, I attribute the fact that I've had the opportunity to be successful. And thank you very much, and I will now go on my way. Thank you.
Board members, shall we step down, Mr. Nicole?
Why don't we do a picture here, John, first, and then have your management team come down and join us in the picture.
Let's take a couple. Ready, one, two, three, and again, one, two, three. Great, let's bring it down.
Who's here?
Shannon, Carol.
We all work together.
We're two of them.
And our leadership.
Come on, that one.
The biggest stairs that I might get.
All right, ready, one, two, and three, and one, two, and three. Great, thank you.
One, two, one, thank you.
Oh, sorry.
It's shooting video.
It's video.
Thank you.
I'm going to do an announcement.
And while folks are filing out, we're going to go to our county council, who has a brief announcement regarding our closed session, and then from there, I'm going to go take the liberty of jumping ahead to item 10—our 1030 item number 27 with Michelle Smolarski. But first, our county council.
Thank you, Chair Parks. This concerns closed session agenda item number 28 in the matter of Barrett versus County of Ventura, Ventura County Superior Court, case number CIV 239187. Your board has approved a post-judgment settlement agreement with the plaintiffs in that case, setting the legal costs payable to the county by the plaintiffs at $31,776, permitting those costs to be paid in installment payments, among other terms. That is the only announcement.
Thank you. And now I'm going to go ahead and move us on to item 27. This is a special time where we will be able to get a presentation from Michelle Smolarski, who has been a representative of—she actually represents the community of Oak Park for all the youngsters out there, but also for our nation. She has actually gone and testified at Congress regarding childhood diabetes, and I know we had her here a couple of weeks ago, and in the interim, Michelle was recently honored with the ABC7 Cool Kid Award. It recognizes deserving youths who help out in the community, and she certainly is well-deserving. So I'm going to turn it over to you, Michelle, and welcome.
Thank you. Good morning, Ventura County Board of Supervisors, Mr. Mike Powers, and all distinguished guests. Thank you for this invitation to speak to you regarding my recent trip to Washington, D.C., and my work with the Juvenile Diabetes Research Foundation, the leading charitable funder for curing type 1 diabetes since 1970, partnering with industry, academia, and government. Though first, I would like to tell you a little bit about my story and what I call pivot points in my life, moments where I had to make choices. I was a perfectly healthy and happy four-year-old on vacation with my family. We were at an amusement park when I started having to use the restroom frequently and having an unquenchable thirst. My mom knew that I didn't look right, and when we got home from our trip, she took me to the pediatrician. With all the telltale signs, my blood sugar was tested, and I was rushed to the hospital, where I was formally given the news that would forever change my life, the news that I had type 1 diabetes. My family was devastated, but our only option was to move forward. After leaving the hospital, we were equipped with loads of information and a bag of hope provided to us by the Juvenile Diabetes Research Foundation of Los Angeles. Because I was so young, I don't really remember life without diabetes, but I do remember how difficult the change was. All of the insulin injections and finger pricks made me feel like a human pincushion. In addition to the physical pain, there was also the emotional pain that came with feeling so different from my peers. I frequently asked the question, "Why me? I did nothing wrong to get this disease." Early on in my primary grades, my mom and I did annual presentations in front of my classes to educate them about diabetes. In addition, my family and I took part in the JDRF Walks to Cure Diabetes. Then came middle school. As an awkward pre-teen with braces and a bad haircut, I just wanted to blend in with everyone else. I was at a pivot point in my life where I wanted to turn away from the constant upkeep that came with the disease. One day during PE, my teacher was educating the class about diabetes, and he didn't differentiate between type 1 and type 2. He explained that diabetes was a lifestyle disease, and that if you didn't eat right and exercise, you could end up with it. I could feel the stares in the room when he said that. I went home sobbing that day because I felt as though my class would look at me differently after hearing this misleading information, like as if I had—I had eaten myself into getting diabetes, which couldn't be further from the truth. After tears shed and talks with my mom, I realized that I could either continue feeling sorry for myself, or I could get up and actually do something. I had reached another pivot point. I knew that I had the knowledge and the will to teach my peers about both types of diabetes and what it is like to live with type 1. My mom and I developed an interactive lesson for a station at our school district's annual ability awareness fair, which is an event that allows children to experience what people with disabilities deal with on a daily basis. This station is still a part of the annual fair, and I have enjoyed engaging in a dialogue with kids every year. It was at that point in my life that I realized just how far I'd come from being a newly diagnosed child who frequently wondered, "Why me?", and I started to think, "Why not me?" It was true that I was given this disease, but I was also given this voice, and with it, I could do great things. After reaching this epiphany, I was firmly committed to using my voice to help those affected with diabetes, as well as teach and hopefully inspire people to get involved in helping find a cure. Type 1 diabetes affects over 3 million people in our country, and in some reports, it is said that one of three people will develop type 2 at some point. In addition to the lives it affects, according to the NIH, it costs the U.S. $174 billion in healthcare expenditures. It is truly an epidemic that requires our nation's highest attention. With this goal in mind, I was fortunate to be chosen as the youth ambassador for the Los Angeles region of the Juvenile Diabetes Research Foundation for the 2009-2010 year. I've been a spokesperson for the organization, sharing my story as well as my passion and hope for a cure when speaking to families, corporations, and organizations. A year ago, I wondered what I could do to make the voices of people living with type 1 diabetes be heard even louder. Our nation's capital, the ultimate facilitator of historical change, would be the perfect place to rally support and make a mark. One of the many wonderful things that the Juvenile Diabetes Research Foundation does is that every two years, children are chosen from each state to speak to Congress regarding funding for research. As you know, along with really smart people in the field of science, we also need funding dollars for research to be able to find better treatments and ultimately a cure. I applied to be a delegate, and I was notified that I would be representing California in Washington, D.C. in the JDRF 2011 Children's Congress. As I counted down the months before my trip, many preparations had to be done. I wrote letters to Senator Boxer and Feinstein and Representative Galagley to schedule meetings with them. I created scrapbooks detailing my personal story, which would be given as mementos to my representatives and senators, and I also created a YouTube video conveying the importance of Children's Congress. From the second we arrived in D.C., we had an amazing experience. Throughout the three-day program, there was never a dull moment or one that lacked inspiration. I became friends with other delegates from across the country and even internationally, from countries like Australia, Canada, Denmark, Mexico, the Netherlands, and the U.K. After all, diabetes is a global disease, and it requires global effort. We even had the opportunity to put our feelings into a song we performed on Capitol Hill with American Idol runner-up Crystal Bowersocks, who also has type 1. In addition, we got to hear the inspiring words of a distinguished panel at a town hall event. The speakers included Olympic swimmer Gary Hall and other very successful people living with type 1 diabetes who shared pivotal moments in their lives. One of the highlights for me was hearing from Supreme Court Justice Sonia Sotomayor. She told us her personal story of being diagnosed at age 8, and although she spoke of a time that lacked the technology that I now benefit from, I so related to what she was saying. As she talked about how the disease forces you to mature, be disciplined, and put thought into how everything will affect your health, I couldn't help but think, "That's me, that's my life, and look, she's a Supreme Court justice." After that event, I went up to her, shook her hand, and let her know just how much she inspired me. During our brief meeting, I even learned that we have more in common than just having diabetes. Like me, she loves to dance. When I asked her what her favorite type was, she replied salsa. It made me smile to think that I had this conversation with a Supreme Court justice. On the final day, I had my meetings with my senators and my congressional representative. While people were touring the Capitol, my mom and I were actually running through the halls of Congress to get to our meetings. I thoroughly enjoyed lobbying and educating my representative, and I liked to think that I was very productive. The meetings went smoothly, and they all confirmed their support for the highest level of diabetes research funding. Congressman Galagley even agreed to make a floor statement. It was unbelievable to actually be a part of what I only get to see on C-SPAN. With a panel of scientists, celebrities, and the other JDRF delegates, we made our voices heard loud and clear to Congress. In fact, during the hearing, the FDA announced they would be releasing its guidelines for the Artificial Pancreas Project. This critical announcement presented all those in attendance with a monumental moment of hope. This technology would be the most modern and beneficial treatment to date, and is in fact a project that is being worked on locally here at UC Santa Barbara in partnership with Sansom Diabetes Research Institute and the JDRF. This would be an external device that would do the calculating of the right insulin dosage based on what current blood glucose levels are. Right now, people have to manually input data and generally guess their insulin While people were touring the Capitol, my mom and I were actually running through the halls of Congress to get to our meetings. I thoroughly enjoyed lobbying and educating my representative, and I liked to think that I was very productive. The meetings went smoothly, and they all confirmed their support for the highest level of diabetes research funding. Congressman Galagly even agreed to make a floor statement. It was unbelievable to actually be a part of what I only get to see on C-SPAN. With a panel of scientists, celebrities, and the other JDRF delegates, we made our voices heard loud and clear to Congress. In fact, during the hearing, the FDA announced they would be releasing its guidelines for the Artificial Pancreas Project. This critical announcement presented all those in attendance with a monumental moment of hope. This technology would be the most modern and beneficial treatment to date, and is in fact a project that is being worked on locally here at UC Santa Barbara in partnership with Sansom Diabetes Research Institute and the JDRF. This would be an external device that would do the calculating of the right insulin dosage based on what current blood glucose levels are. Right now, people have to manually input data and generally guess their insulin levels with many factors going into their estimation. Now that I'm back from my trip from DC, many people have been coming up to me and asking me, "How was your trip?" It's really difficult to summarize an experience that was so impactful for me and the diabetes community. It was another one of my pivot points, and although I'm back in California, I can tell you that my journey is far from over. I have found my voice in advocacy and will continue pursuing my dreams. I know that a world free of diabetes is not an easy goal to achieve, but I do know that it's possible if we make it our nation's priority. And in the meanwhile, I won't be waiting, I will be working, working on behalf of all those affected by diabetes to reach my destination of a cure. Finally, I'd like to thank you for allowing me to share my story, and I also wanted to announce that there will be two walks to cure diabetes held locally, one at Dodger Stadium in LA on November 6, and one at Ledbetter Beach in Santa Barbara on September 10. And for more information or help, please contact jdrfla.org. Thank you.
Wonderful speech. Thank you.
Good job.
Michelle, it's so impressive to see how you've taken something that is viewed as a disability and really making it your strength. Congratulations to you, and we look forward to hearing more wonderful things about you in the future. Thank you for coming today. It was wonderful having you.
Wish you well.
Congratulations.
Good to have you back.
Thank you, Michelle.
That was inspiring. Our next item on our agenda, maybe not so, and that is our investment report, item 24.
Oh, I think this group can make it inspiring. Come on.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Mr. Powers. I'm Stephen Hens, the Treasury Tax Collector of Ventura County. Ordinarily, I just automatically defer to Bob Hanson, who is the Chief Investment Officer who does the work for you. Bob's main worry when I step up to the microphone ahead of him is that I will somehow lose control and go on and say too many nice things about him, so I won't. Instead, I'd like to introduce to you Mrs. Ty Ralston, who has the great joy of working for her high maintenance boss, Mr. Hanson. And in fact, she is the one who prepares your board letter. And she underwent three months of training for a job she'd never done when it became apparent that Mr. Hanson's assistant was going to be gone on maternity leave, during which time, since she is a supervisory employee in the Treasury, she has also acted on occasions as the Treasury Manager. And so credit must be given where credit is due, and Mrs. Ralston has been a powerful force for management good in the Treasury Department. Thank you, Ty. You come on investments not to hear from me, but from Bob, and so I'll turn this over to him. We anticipate that there may be some questions about the state of the world today, and Bob's main worry was that he might say something impolitic while he's at the microphone, and so it may be, one never knows. So we'll go ahead, and if there are questions that you have that you would like me to try to answer for you, I of course will be available at the conclusion of his comments. Mr. Hanson.
Good morning, Madam Chairman, members of the board, Mr. Powers. Another dull day in the market. I'll start with the board letter and let you know that the .92 rate, very happy with that. LAF, the big question is, where's LAF always? It's at .45, so they're lagging a little bit behind, but I'm sure they'll catch up with me. I think basically what I'd like to do is make some statements this morning to answer questions that have already been asked of me that probably you have the same questions. In regard to the paragraph 2, where we have our ratings for the portfolio from Standard and Poor's, talking to Mr. Rizzo yesterday, Senior Director at Standard and Poor's, we are not on watch. We have obviously then not had a downgrade, so that's good news. Next, regarding the Treasury downgrade to AA+. It's interesting, the news came out and bonds actually rallied. If you look at the 30-year Treasury, they went up 5%. So that's a huge pop in the market, the exact opposite of what you'd think. But then again, that's the same thing that happened to Japan in 2001. They rallied, and rates went down after they dropped rates. I think what we have here with this AA, AA is becoming the new AAA. There are very few AAA's in this world now. It's just too hard to have that good of credit quality. Exxon, Chevron, Microsoft, Johnson &amp; Johnson, they're the big names, they're AAA. There's a lot of tremendous names like Toyota financially, GE, that are AA's, JP Morgan, Chase. So I think that when you look at the downgrade, it's a big thing, but I think what you've got is the new normal. The AA becomes AAA. 60% of the AAA debt in the world is US Treasuries that are purchased from our country. That's a huge amount of money. I doubt if any of those people sold on the downgrade. So what I'm saying is, you kind of move the bands. It's like college, if you're getting, not me, but if you ever got 100%, 100%, and you're so happy, all of a sudden you get a 95 and a 95. It's still a good score, you're still getting an A, and AA+ is still a great rating. I think there is a political message that both parties, Congress, everyone, needs to get together and try to cut back on the spending and reduce the national debt. But I feel all countries at this point are having a lot of problems, but really, if you look at it, we're probably the best-looking horse in a grocery factory. I think what will happen if we don't get our act together 10 or 15 years from now, China really will be the country. The only thing stopping China now is the Green Wall. And the Green Wall is the internet, where they can control what you can read on the internet. When they do away with that, and China is changing too, we've seen that over the years, you will see an increase in entrepreneurships, and you will see China really take off. So I think when we have our next presidential election, you're going to hear a lot about reducing the debt and getting spending cut back. So I think it's a good thing. I'm sad to see us downgraded, but I think we'll be just fine. Regarding the stock market, it's a funny thing, they downgrade our bonds and the stock market gets hammered. Where's the money going to go if people, for those people that ask me, is the stock market going to fall like 2008? I don't think so. I don't know where the money would go. At .01 in Vanguard, Treasury notes are 2.25, a quarter of a percent. I think it's more of what I always talk about, those traders don't like steady prices. The more volatility, the more money they're going to make. Believe me, yesterday, a lot of people made a lot of money, shorting the market. Down 634 last time I looked, up 173. I wouldn't look at it like this, because it's an up day-to-day. I would see more like this, but I'm still not that concerned. They just love volatility, that's the one thing. That's about the major brunt of the questions I've been asked lately.
Supervisor Zieragosa has a new one for you.
No, I just want to ask, I'm really happy to hear that in the other part of the rating that we're still AAA, you know, the County of Ventura. The other question I have on the AA+, what countries aren't AAA at this time?
I'd have to research that for you and look it up.
Because I know you said that word.
Oh, well, you know what? In the AAA countries, there aren't very many, Norway because of the oil, Switzerland.
But AA+ for the US is...
That's still very good.
Very good.
Excellent, right.
Because the way the media made a sound on TV is like, you know, a second-rate credit country, you know.
Well, I don't want to say anything about the media, but they need to write stories. And when the NFL settled their contract, we didn't write about that, and then before that, we had the Japan nuclear thing, and now we've got the riots in London. They write a lot of things, and they need to write something, but I just don't think it's that bad. I know Kathleen's back there. No, but I mean, I think it does get overdone, but...
But Standard and Poor's rated the US AA+, but Moody's and the other folks are AAA. How come? What was...
I don't know. I just, they didn't feel it was time. Remember in 2008, the rating agencies were criticized severely for acting too slow. So now, are they going too fast, whatever? They're getting whipsawed. I don't know. It's interesting. That would be a good question to ask them.
Madam Chair?
Supervisor Bennett?
Yeah, I just, we've brought it up in the past, but there's been some stuff in there about the government-backed paper and what's happening with Fannie Mae and Jenny Mae and all that. I just would like to ask you to obviously keep an eye on that, and if you notice any change, if you'd let us know right away. Doing our due diligence to keep our eye on that.
24/7. I'm watching it. I really, at this point, am not worried, not even a little bit.
And Supervisor Foy has one also.
Bob, market's up 90 right now. 86, 86, it's up 86.
It wouldn't surprise me if it closed down.
I wouldn't be surprised, yeah.
And more for the weak and whatever, but it's not like 2008 where it's like...
Yeah, we're here, it's 600, then there's 6, and then 1,000, right?
Right.
Under our ability to purchase government notes, what is our policy? We only can purchase AAA, or what do we, do we have to change the policy if we're saying we're buying government bonds or not?
No, we didn't stipulate what the rating was. If I remember the investment policy, it just lists the agencies per name, because they are government agencies, and they were enacted by Congress, and it's an unwritten or implied guarantee. And our system could not take not paying off that debt.
Right. No, I agree with you. I'm just curious, if we have a policy issue, I don't know if the Retirement Board has a policy issue, what they can purchase too, if it's AAA only or something that...
I think they just list with federal agencies the names. But if you're talking about corporate bonds, I think we're A or better.
That's right, I thought there was something in there.
Corporate bonds, A or better, but agencies are a different category in the investment policy.
Okay, so it sounds like long-term, though, we're going to be seeing these below 1% returns.
For a while, and I just don't see what all this money, where this money would go if there was a big fall in the stock market, because bonds are so low now.
Yeah.
And the stock market has had a nice recovery. So the traders looking for a great opportunity to knock it down, because then they get to trade it back up again.
Yeah, yeah, that's why the traders don't want to put it in gold or anything else they don't trade, so they want to keep it trading, so, okay, great, thanks.
I just find it ironic that S&amp;P lowers the rating for the Fed, and then everybody starts buying Treasury bills, so it's kind of ironic.
Well, I still think, like what I said, 60% of the world, 60% of the AAA debt in the world is US Treasuries. So I mean, what else are you going to buy? Same thing in Japan, what else are you going to invest in? What's better? Just like the federal agencies, what's better? If you talk about, well, why don't you buy Microsoft, or why don't you buy Chevron? They don't need any money. Those people have 50, 100 billion in cash, they have that much probably in unused bank lines, so they're not out on the curve issuing bonds you can buy. So once again, if you have faith in our government, then you need to feel comfortable with Fannie Mae Home Loan and the Mortgage Corp., because this is certainly nothing like 2008, where we were talking about nationalizing corporations and doing all that. It's just kind of like a storm, and it'll go away, but that doesn't mean you're not going to see a lot of volatility.
And they do say it's a good time to buy, when the market's slow.
Warren Buffett, people like that, they don't buy on good news, buy when nobody else wants it. Donald Trump buying buildings, buy when everyone hates it.
I saw Buffett was downgraded himself yesterday.
Not by him.
So with that then, I think we're looking for a motion to receive and file the investment report.
Madam Chair, I do have a response to two of the comments that were raised by members of the board, and we can deal with them right today. Three weeks ago, Standard and Poor's downgraded a whole raft of municipal investment funds like ours to put them on credit watch. Ours was not placed on credit watch. Santa Barbara, Los Angeles City, San Bernardino, Solano County, they were. So I pulled their investment reports to see if I could discern why they got put on credit watch and we did not. And it was apparent from reading the formula that was used by Standard and Poor's and looking at their portfolios, that the reason they got put on credit watch was they had significant exposure to long-term federal financial instruments, 5, 10, and 30-year bonds. We don't own any of those, in part, well, absolutely due to the Board of Supervisors' wise decision to, in the investment advice letter, to limit us to a three-year horizon. So that's why we're not on credit watch, and related to that is the downgrade, the talk about the federal credit rating downgrade. Actually, the downgrade was of 5, 10, and 30-year bonds issued by the federal agencies, not a downgrade of the government. It was a downgrade of certain classes of financial instruments, none of which we own. So again, it would be unlikely that the immediate impact of this downgrade would have any significant impact on the Ventura County investment pool. But yes, Supervisor Bennett, Mr. Hanson is on this 24/7 to make sure that if they do anything, we'll be able to report it to you right away. The Winston Churchill knew two months into the year-long blitz against London by the Luftwaffe that England would carry through and succeed, and that they were inflicting unacceptable losses on the German air force. And he went to the people of Britain and told them this, and that Britain would win. But he made it clear that bombs would continue to fall. And our prediction to you is that in the broader scheme of the financial world and the economy of the United States, there will be bombs continue to fall. But the economy is resilient, and we will carry through. And this is true, in particular, of the Ventura County Employees Retirement Association Fund, which is of particular interest to the board. I'm sure that it is well diversified. It has its ups and downs, and my guess is that recently it's had its downs. But in the long run, this will be regarded as a time where the fund was able to move forward. So in Treasury and on the Retirement Fund Board, these are interesting times, and I'm honored to be a part of it, and thank you very much.
Thank you. And do we have a motion? Motion by Supervisor Foy, second by Supervisor Bennett. If we all please vote. Great job. Next item then is our harbor stuff. We've got item 25, which is a second hearing regarding adoption of an ordinance regulating waterways, and I know this is a... waterways, and I know this is a second reading of an item that we have heard already. Good morning, Ms. Krieger.
Good morning, members of the Board. Mr. Powers, I have nothing new to add, since this is a second reading unless there are questions.
We do have a motion from Supervisor Zaragoza, second from Supervisor Bennett. We can move on with that vote to Item 26, which is a receive-and-file of the Harbor Department's Above and Beyond Report, what we've all been looking forward to. A PowerPoint?
A PowerPoint that's very brief, but before I start, I want to make sure, because you know what a small group we have, and we're actually missing a couple of people here today, I'd like the people who are here to be recognized to just stand up for minute this. I think many of you know that due to this deep recession that we were hoping we were starting to come out of, and now I see a little turbulence in the market. But due to this terrible recession we've had, we reduced our marketing division to nothing. We had to lay off staff. And so what has happened is the harbor has continued with, actually more than 20 events every year with other staff, primarily Susie Watkins, who's sitting right behind me, picking up the slack along with their regular jobs, and we're not heavily staffed anyway. So it really is a lot of labor. I mean, you're talking about advertising posters, arranging for portable toilets, making sure signs go up, making sure, you know, vendors are hired, making sure tall ships are contracted with. It's a very big deal. And I should note, I did note in the letter, that harbor maintenance staff do an extraordinary level of work. We do, actually, we're missing one, but our maintenance supervisor, Mike, if you want to raise your hand, is here. They post all the banners, they put up the highway signs, they do everything in addition to maintaining the 100-plus acres they already take care of. And we only have half dozen of those guys on a good day for two miles of beaches and 100 acres. So on the weekend, this most recent weekend, June 24th to 26th, we had a Tall Ship Festival, somewhere between 15,000 and 20,000 people, we estimate, were there for the weekend. It was lots of fun, I'll run through a few of the pictures. And every one of the people who you see here, plus a couple who weren't able to attend, volunteered. In fact, some volunteered their entire weekend, and they insist that they do it on a volunteer basis. It's not something that we require, and otherwise, we really couldn't get this done. So it seemed to me, as I thought about it afterwards, because I have to say, you can hear it in my voice, I'm not usually very nervous, that I was very touched by the fact, as I looked around that weekend being there, that after all these years, people are still showing up to volunteer for these events, and showing their dedication to public service. And that's not to say they don't do a good job at their regular jobs, they do, and they have a lot of work to do, but this is something totally in addition to that, and definitely not required. So here's tall ships. Do I have the, yep, I do. You all know this isn't my best skill. There's Susie there with, I don't even know who that is. Oh, Michelle Veloski, oh yes, that's why I recognize her, one of our ship owners who also was very busy that weekend. This is a children's wall, I partly point this out, there was a whole children's area, maintenance had these pre-painted plywood structures for each day of the festivals. They'd move them over and replace with a new one, so the kids could come and paint every day, though we see what it looks like toward the end of the day instead of the beginning of the day. One of the ships, Karen Scanlon, who's our Harbor Fiscal Department Fiscal Officer, Jack Sparrow, and one of the kids from the ships. Yeah, kind of looks like him, huh? Another one of the ships. And here, you all know Jack, two of the people from the tall ships, and Gary Hertensteiner in our tall ship shirts. And by the way, these two were also there for the Fourth of July Children's Parade, which we helped organize, another part of the children's area that day. MJ, who's also here, our intern for this year, we get a lot of help from having an intern. One of the boats, the, that go out and shoot at each other. Carol Labella, who actually is retired and still comes back to volunteer, and she's been retired for several years and still does work with us. Another ship. We had lots and lots of families. I think it was a great decision this year that was made by my people, I wasn't really involved, to keep the vendor area and the kids' area free. You only paid when you went down to the ships. So a lot of people could come and enjoy it, even if they couldn't, and I had a number of people come up to me and say how much they appreciated being able to come, they were out of work, or they, whatever reason, and they could still come and have a good time, so that was a good call. So you can see, some of you, there's Mike Brody with his tall ship shirt, another one of the, Marilyn Miller, another retiree, who's still with us on contract, was also there that weekend, and she's here today. That's it, but just gives you an idea of what happened, and I thought you should know what a dedicated small group you have, and how much I appreciate them.
You know, I want to thank you, Lynn, because it seems like we always hear the wrong things about what's happening with the county employees and the harbor, but I just want to thank all your staff for the good work they've done, you know, and the commendable work they've done. You know, and Marilyn knows, because she worked in the city, I was in charge of a department for the city, and every time that I did an evaluation on employee, there was employees that did the rigor work, and then there was the commendable employees. The commendable employees are the employees above and beyond that volunteer on weekends and so forth. And I think that we have an excellent, excellent staff here, they're all commendable employees for doing all the excellent work, volunteering, removing the transporting banners, helping the people, and just making things happen, and I just want to thank all the staff, and you, and Susie, for doing an excellent job for the county and the community. Thank you.
Mr. Powers?
Oh, just to echo that, it really is a great reflection on the Harbor Dream team out there, the passion that you have for what you do, and for customer service, and for caring about what you do and the people that you serve out there. And you see it in the presentation that Lynn just made, but also in my interactions with the Lessies out there. They're just so thrilled with the relationship they have with all of you out there, so you've got a special thing going, so thank you, congratulations.
And Supervisor Foy?
Yeah.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Thank you, Lynn, for bringing this forward to each and every one of you. You could just do your job, that nine-to-five, whatever that schedule is, you could just do that. But the success of our county is really every one of you who does go above and beyond, who understands that a business typically in hard times doesn't cut back all of its marketing, because you have to keep your name out there, you have to keep your product out there. But as public dollars and public servants, it's one of those areas that does get cut, unfortunately. So to be able to call upon you and have you, each and every one of you rise to the challenge to help us to continue to keep the harbor face out there, continue to bring the public to the harbor, so they can learn and appreciate it as much as each and every one of you do, is very much appreciated. You're valued employees, we thank you, and volunteers, thank you.
Supervisor Foy?
Yeah, Lynn, I just, I've been out there three or four times the last month, and I was looking at some boats, some good deals out there, you know, and it was, you know, but you go around, people say, well, there's a few slips that are empty, and yeah, but the thing is, they're still saying there's great energy out there. There's great energy, things are moving, and it's still good, and it's all because of what these people are doing. And I think that's what you see by the people that are still out there enjoying it, it's just a lot of fun, and there's a lot of great things going. I mean, even in a down and coming, because it could be all negative, and it's not. And I think your people have done a tremendous job, and I just appreciate what they're doing, because it's a valued asset that we in the county have out there, and it hasn't always been that way, and I think you guys have done a tremendous job. So I just want to say I appreciate it, when you go out to the boat show and all the things they do, it's just great, it's just great stuff out there. So thanks so much, we do appreciate it. Thanks for bringing this, so we can see all the, thank you.
It is kind of a hidden treasure still, you know, to get the word out, I'm sorry to hear that we don't have the funds to, you know, help you advertise and all, and it's nice to have those billboards, and even if your own people have to get out there and put the signs up on them. But you know, anything that we can do to help pass the word on, you know, maybe through our libraries and other ways that we can get the message out, I know the Tall Ships Festival is just a wonderful, wonderful event, as well as, you know, opportunities for whale watching, and just getting people out to the harbor, and so once they try it, I know they'll like it and want to come back. All right, so...
You go, if I could, real quick, you go on the radar screen and off the radar screen, and a lot of times when you're on the radar screen, it's because things are getting hot. And the sign of a real professional is all that time you're off the radar screen, that you're doing all those things that keep pushing the ball up the court, and this is one of those things. So thank you, and I want to thank your staff, that really helps a lot, I appreciate it.
Yes, thank you all. And with that, I guess we, do we need a motion to receive that? And then Supervisor Long made that motion, the last motion of the day, I might add. Who will be the last second?
I have a second.
We need a second, but...
All right, Supervisor Zaragoza wins that honor, if we could all please vote. That passes, and that is the last vote of our session, and we will not be back until after the summer break.
September 13th.
On September 13th. So with that, everyone have a wonderful rest, and hope you get some time off from the hard work we do, and see you all back in September.